Good evening. What a good crowd, I love it. So many people show up. You all must have known Commissioner Boils was in the audience and you all wanted to come see him, right? Anyway, welcome all of you and we do welcome Commissioner Boils. He stayed over from another meeting, just couldn't stay away. And we always had the media in the back of the room, Crescent News Bulletin, CCTV, we welcomed them. And of course, most of all, you the citizens here. You need to know, we had a meeting this afternoon at four o'clock, and then we had one at five o'clock, and then we had one at six o'clock, and kickoff is at seven o'clock. So we're gonna be moving. Anyway, at this time, I ask you silence any electronic devices you may have. And if you want to speak to the city council anytime this evening, we have some cards in the back of the room that you can fill out and get to Madam Clerk, and she'll get them to me, and then I'll call you at an appropriate time. Also, I'm gonna ask a little indulgence this evening. We're transitioning to the 21st century, and we have some technology we haven't been using before. So with new technology, there's potential glitch, and so if we have that, I'm sure you can all get through it with us. All right, glitch number one. Okay. This evening, I'm gonna call on Dr. Naomi Barnes to lead us invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If for some reason you choose to leave the room during the invocation, feel free to do that, and you'll see when we're done and you can come back in. So this time, I ask you to stand, and Dr. Barnes, if you'd come up please.
Oh, no, I want you to use the podium over there, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. We're gonna pray first, and then we'll pledge. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Dear Lord and dear God, we come to you right now in the name of Jesus. First of all, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for our life, health, and strength. Father, I ask you to bless the night, Lord God. Bless the councilman, bless the city manager, bless everybody in the leading role, Lord, and let them know that you are with them always, even to the end of the world. And Father, don't just forget about Crest-- just don't let Crestview be the only one, but let's go to the state of Florida, Lord. Look at those people in position that are working with our people. Let's go to White House, Lord God, and all over the United States, that these government bodies should do the right thing in the name of Jesus. And we be so careful to give you the praise, the glory, and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Barnes. Okay, and the new procedures, we're already signed in, so you don't actually see it up there, but we're really here. And we would just announce that one of our council members, Councilman LaBeauf, is not with us this evening. Other than that, so we do have a quorum, and we will move on to, all right. This time, does any council member have any objection to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is proved by unanimous consent. And now, I get to do something really neat, and that is, I get to read a proclamation. So if I could have all the ladies here from the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority join me up front. Squeezing me in amongst all the beautiful ladies here. You know, what's really neat is that, you know, just a few years ago, 2015, the county celebrated 100 years in existence. And then in 2016, we followed them as a city, 100 years in existence. So this is pretty, pretty unique, to have a sorority that's been around for 100 years. That's the proclamation, 100 years. And I know you all know that 100 years ago, it wasn't easy to start a sorority for minorities. So be 100 years old is a significant achievement. So having said that, let me, let me read this. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated was founded in 1920, and whereas this sorority was founded by five co-ed students, students at Howard University, and whereas these sorority members envisioned a sisterhood that would promote the highest standards of scholarship achievement, and whereas the sorority sisterhood would foster a greater sense of unity among its members, and whereas this sorority has a diverse membership of more than 120,000 college-educated women within its incorporation, and whereas there are more than 800 chapters in North America, Europe, Asia, the Caribbean, Africa, and the Middle East. And whereas since its founding, this sorority has historically focused on social causes. Therefore, I, J.D. Whitton, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Crestview, Florida, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 13, 2020, as a day of celebration and acknowledgement of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and its devoted members on its 100th year anniversary.
All right.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so very much for the recognition.
Well, not yet. I'd like to do, now, since I'm mayor, I get to do it. And that is, we have an official photo. I'd like all the elected officials to stand behind us, kind of in between, so we don't block you out, and have our city manager, who's been signed off on using his cell phone as a camera.
I've been instructed that one of you has to change sides in order to create balance. My friend is type A over here, so.
Okay, and make sure you can get everybody in behind. And the other thing we're gonna do to enhance these ceremonies, to make sure we have everybody in the photo, is we have a sheet of paper, and if you all want a digital copy sent, you give us a name and the email address, and we'll send it to you, make sure you get that, okay? And then after that, if anybody else in the audience wants to take pictures, we'll do that. So what we'll do is we'll pose for this between you and me.
All right, y'all squeeze in a little bit on this side. Three. Oh, Ms. Brown, you gotta move over a little bit closer to Joe. There you go. One, two, three. All right.
Okay, anybody else?
Anybody else? Yeah, nope. Jackie might get mad at me.
Okay, all right.
I was like, hey, I need my foot back.
People get mad at me if I take your foot off.
One thing I'd like to add, because I sit down, is I don't want to overlook what you have, the citizens of here from last year, Ms. Fodderdale's in the audience. Good to see you. Y'all, welcome to stay, but if you're bored or you wanna go watch-- you may leave if you want to. Okay, it looks to me, right at this point, we should have a presentation by Ms. Barron. Ms. Barron? Hey, how you doing? I didn't see you sneak in.
Good evening, good evening.
Yeah, we'd like you to, are you gonna bring up the PowerPoint?
I'm doing my best.
Okay. And yeah, you can speak from the podium. Just let us know who you are, where you're from, although I know you, not everybody does.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm Nisha Barron, your regional, your local regional partnership specialist for the 2020 census.
Nisha, would you bring your mic down just a little bit, so everybody can--
Oh, can you hear me?
There you go, thank you.
There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, let's start over. Yeah, rewind. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Nisha Barron, your regional partnership specialist for the 2020 census coming up. I am a citizen of Okaloosa County, which is a requirement for this position. You have to be familiar with your, your communities, the people that's in it, and how we work, how we talk, and how we live, because it's really about us. I'm a retired Air Force veteran of 24 years services in the Air Force as a communication officer. I worked with VAE Systems for about eight years, an MTI at first, and then I retired from there and became a thrift shopper and a gardener. But I took on this position because I just have to serve. I was a Girl Scout at eight. I just have to serve. I took this position because I think this is important. It's important to our community, it's important to our country. We have to, it's our civic duty to participate in the census. We've heard a lot of things about the census, it's in the news real hot and heavy right now, but the bottom line is, it is mandated by the Constitution of the United States. It says we will be counted every 10 years in the year ending in zero. It started for a lot of reasons, but we have to count the people, so the federal government knows how many people it needs to take care of, bottom line. The census, do we get it? I can just keep going, you know?
Keep going.
Okay, keep going.
We said there'd be a few glitches, so we made that promise to you.
Yes, the census says count the residents. It says count the residents. The money follows the numbers and not the needs. It is about power, it's the law. It's about power, it's about money, but ultimately, it's about people. The census count, how many people we have in our communities determine how many congressional seats we have. There's the power. Last decennial, we count Florida gained two more seats. We're not allowed to say how many we might have, because that's somebody's study, it's not fact. Also, it draws our congressional lines, it draws our district lines. If our schools are too crowded, it's probably because we do not have the right count. The money follows the numbers and not the needs. It's also about people, how many people. If you have things like federal grants, federal subsidies, the first thing they want to ask is how many people. If Sacred Heart wants to do a study on heart disease amongst women, and it's our Sacred Heart, they go, well, how many women in Crestview? How many women under 35? Census is the largest data warehouse collection in the world, and everybody uses Census data. As you know, businesses, before they open up, do a business plan. Should I open up a Dave and Buster's in Crestview? How many people is there? What's their income? Can they afford my ticket? Will they like to play games? Census data is very important. Florida is the third-largest populated state in America, ahead of New York. It did that in 2014. It's been doing it every year since then. The federal budget is trying to divide $675 billion amongst 50 states, and it is based on how many people we have. Now that we've done this, and they expect us to have additional 6 million people by 2030, we want to get our money, folks, we got to be counted. This is important. What we do with the money, we finance its roads, education, transportation. Medicare is funded by Census. Anything that says federally funded, federally subsidized, even college grants. If your community wants to add a new playground, and the county's budget is a little limited, you might want to do a federal grant. But guess what's gonna happen? How many people live there? How many children are there? Is it worth the value? Do you meet the criterias to get this grant? Census data is important. Our fire departments, our wildlife, even before, we cannot wait till FEMA has to come, God forbid, and visit us again, when they decide how much money Crestview needs, they're gonna say, how many people times this amount of money to give us the help we're gonna need in an emergency? And we can't wait till that day. These numbers last for 10 years. Census data, people like to go, oh, we're gonna go look up our ancestry. It's nice to have how many men, how many women, and Crestview's about even, men and women. How many veterans for veteran services? How many children for children's services? It's not unique stuff like that to do, but it also helps with problem solving, when we have traffic and we want to change the roads, and that's when it comes very important. If Nike wants to open up the store, how many colors are Air Jordans? How many young men do you have? How many under 25? It's just that simple, and it's just that complicated. Census data is everywhere you look. Last time, we missed 2 million children under 5. That's a lot of children, that's a lot of money, almost $15 million, easy. That's 10 years of disservice to those children. The census believes it's because, fortunately, unfortunately, some homes are fragmented. So did mom count the baby, or did daddy count the baby? Sometimes he spends half his time there, half his time there. We have young mothers that maybe don't understand the importance of Census data, or participating in the census. Unfortunately, we got a lot of grandmothers that became moms. Is she supposed to count it? She doesn't know. We have to count the children, and to that end, we employ schools, we're enlisting schools to help, because there's nothing more exciting to a kid than he learns something new, and he's gonna wear mom out with his new data. Mom, have you taken the census? Have you done the census? So we're going through the school with a lot of programs. Over here, when we're trying to, the Census Bureau, we're garnishing partners, and I hope I'm looking at my new set of partners, to help get the word out to our community, that it's so important. This year, the census is not only the largest mobilization, mobilization, mobilization of people besides war, the census, and we have to do that to take these numbers. So we decided to target the low-response group, but this year, it is different. The low-response group normally are immigrants and minorities, but this year, like everybody else, the census has to do more with less, and we want to be more efficient, and we want to save money. So we're going fully digital. We're gonna ask the American public to dial a 1-800 number and answer just 10 questions, or get online and answer just 10 questions, or if you're old school, like some people today, like, if it's not on paper, it didn't happen, you have the option to get the paper. So we're gonna do that. And I think that's more important of the information we need to know, so that, with that being said, it affects everyone. This is important to everyone, and I'm more concerned about our senior citizens. A lot of them are tech savvy, but to get online, to fix this number, and I've met a man, he's a Vietnam vet, and he's just not trusting nobody. How do I know it's being, how do they know it's me? How do I know it's them? Well, we got a team of people that's gonna help you out with that, and we want you to know that your data is secure. Census data is secured, it's encrypted, it's locked for 72 years and a day. It's about data, it's not about names and addresses. You might go to censusancestry.com and look like, look up great grandma, great-great-grandpa, but it stops at 1940. Why? Because 1950 is not gonna be released till 2022. It is encrypted and is vaulted for 72 years and a day. Why? Because in 1790, on the first census, the average lifespan was 72 years. So 72 years and a day, if we release it, it may not matter that Mary and Bob lived at 1313 Markenburg Lane. Also, the census data is secure, it is not shared with any other agency, it is against the law to share it. Our president on December 31st is gonna get a list of numbers, not addresses, not phone numbers, he's gonna get data. Census data cannot be shared with the FBI, the CIA, or any other agency, it cannot be used against you, it's for the purpose of what it's intended for, and that alone. So your information will be confidential, it will not be shared. And incidentally, when they come to your door, should you not respond, self-respond by dialing the 1-800 number and answering 10 questions, getting online and answering 10 questions? We're gonna invite you four times to do that. After four times, we're coming to knock it. Four times, we're gonna start March, the middle of March, and sending out a license letter explaining everything, and with your code. You're gonna get a code, to dial the one number, enter the code, and answer the 10 questions, or you go online, enter the code. And then we're gonna say, okay, Mary didn't respond, let's send her a little postcard. Mary, did you forget? And then we're gonna send it there. After four times, we're gonna send the team out, and hopefully, just like we did Address Canvas, it would only be 30%, which is way lower in the cost of sending everybody to every last address. So we're gonna start mid-March, it's gonna go all the way to April 27th, and then we're gonna have the no-response group. Our next, very next operation, and they're eight-to-10 week operations, are group homes. We're gonna go to group homes like senior citizens, barracks, hospitals, non-traditional homes like campgrounds, and do an in-person count. A lot of the organizations like barracks would probably have the numbers already there, we're gonna collect, if there's a few stragglers, we'll help them get it done. But anybody that shows up to your door should have a census badge. They should have a census badge, they should have a bag that says it. If they do not, if for any reason you do not feel that person is not official, you have every right to turn them away and call your sheriff department. Sheriff Department is one of our finest partners, and they're gonna notify people that they're out there. And we've already had a couple incidences, minor. Ms. Suzie decided she was gonna sell her old census bags from 2000, she thought they'd be nice little keepsakes, and it was at the thrift shop. Then my girlfriend, who knew I was, she's like, hey, there's some bags, like, what? We don't want the bad guys to get the bags, and like I told my supervisor, who's way up there in DC, this is not about Ms., I'm sure she's a kind lady, and the people at the thrift shop wanted to protect her, because she's her favorite, she just thought of something. But they did, by the time they got there, they knew where she worked, that she had them online already, and everything, because they're not playing with taking care of security. Same thing with your data, and this is breached. A lot of people are concerned about the breach of that digital data. And so they're working every day to counter that, every day to monitor that, every day to improve it, because we're gonna protect the data that we have until it gets to this encryption state. So the census is about the people, it's about law, it's about money, but it's for everyone. To change the census process, questions, you have to change the constitution. We had to change the constitution to allow women to vote. We had to change the constitution for other people to participate. So you can't wake up and add a question. It has a process. It says when it's gonna be done, how it's gonna be done, the date that it will be done, by 2018 it needs to be done. There was, this year, a test question to make sure, because there was a request. But the question has to go out and be vetted, and give back the information that was intended, and it didn't pass the test, so it's not there. That question, we're not gonna talk about. It's not there. The constitution says count residents, not citizens, because if you're here, you're driving our roads, we need to take care of our roads. If you're here, the Hippocratic Oath says, we will take care of anybody that shows up. They have to be funded. If the federal government doesn't fund it, who's gonna fund it? So we're gonna count every person that lives in the United States, once and only once, and in the right place, and to that end, I need help. I can talk about this thing, and believe me, I do, I think it's important, and even though my days off, I'm at the beach, like, hey, have you heard about the census? Because it's that important. But I can't talk to everyone. Your community doesn't know me specifically, but they do know you. And we have businesses that talk to people and their constituents every day. We asking for help, to put it on your Facebook page, to put it on your email blast, to be a partner. I've spoken to churches from here to, I'm representing, actually standing here representing six counties, Okaloosa, Walton, Escambia, Santa Rosa, Holmes, Washington, and I gave away Jackson, that's just too far. So, and so we want to, need help. I'd be happy to go anywhere and everywhere to talk to anyone and everybody, and I, matter of fact, I also hate that those Zetas got away, because I'm trying to get the Zetas to help me out. I'll get them, though, I'm gonna get them. So any kind of festival you have, we'll make a table, it'll help you get it done, to help explain to, how important this is to give out information, and oh, by the way, the bottom line is, we're hiring. We still need some people, worried about, actually, our county's doing great, our county's doing great, and matter of fact, I'm sorry, Mayor, congratulations for inviting the census to come. Florida's the last state to come on board and fund the census. Now, we're the one of seven states that didn't, I think there's four left. We just came on board this month, so we had to go bottom up. The League of Cities happened, and all the mayors went to Orlando's, and mayors started calling me, they said, this is important, congratulations, that your mayor saw, and Ms. Roy saw, we need to get this done now, ahead of the thing, because it's a lot of people to educate. A lot of people still do not know, we're not coming to the door. And I think people are a lot better receptive to do something, the more they're informed, the better they're likely to do, and it's important. So, census is coming, I hope I'm looking at my next complete council committee or partnership in the city of Crestview. And if you'd like me to come speak at your organization, your church, your business, if you'd like to help me out, I have business cards and a webpage, and any questions?
Any questions up here on the council? Questions, comments?
No, I have a comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I worked for the 2010 census, and we did go door to door, so I'm kinda glad that they're not doing that this year. But it is a very important thing. I've worked for it for, I was in Kentucky at the time, and the count is very important.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So I hope that the city of Crestview--
Thank you for that. He's an interesting tidbit. Fortunately, unfortunately for Panama City, Mexico City Beach, is a lot of destruction because of Hurricane Michael. A lot of the people have been displaced.
Yes.
Their count, obviously, is gonna be a little bit low, which means their funding for schools, roads, transportation can be affected, because you have to count the people. So if you're not sure where you're gonna be counted, mom's house, dad's house, it's where you're living at, April 1st, 2020, official city day, census day. The other thing that happens, let's say all your stuff is destroyed, now you need an ID card or something. You can file a BB form 16, B16, through the census and get your data back, your birth right back, so that you can get a passport, so you can get your birth certificate, because there's a hole in it. So that, that's a lovely thing. Data has never really been shared. We shared it one time with the Japanese internment, and after that, we formed Title 13 that says it will not be shared. Only one president tried to use it, that was Eisenhower, he wanted to find out who his new neighborhood. It didn't work. So your data is secured. The census is simple, we're trying to make it easy, it's safe, and it's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. And now, we're gonna have the presentation core values. I believe, city manager, are you doing that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce. We're trying to make this also as brief as possible, but as you know, one of the questions that I got repeatedly during the interview process was, you know, what are we gonna do to build a good, strong team? What are we gonna do recruitment? How are we gonna keep people, that kind of stuff? Immediately after being hired, we did the strategic planning and established our mission statement and our vision statement and our goals and objectives for the city. And so the next step in that process was, was for us as the employees of the city to develop core values that we can then be evaluated on and we can use for training and other purposes. And so earlier this year, we hired Jessica Levens as our human resources, we call her a specialist, but she's really a generalist, she does absolutely everything, human resources-- How are we going to keep people, that kind of stuff? Immediately after being hired, we did the strategic planning and established our mission statement and our vision statement and our goals and objectives for the city. And so the next step in that process was for us as the employees of the city to develop core values that we can then be evaluated on, and we can use for training and other purposes. And so earlier this year, we hired Jessica Levens as our human resources. We call her a specialist, but she's really a generalist. She does absolutely everything human resources related, and so she has head up a team of employees to develop our core values. So they're going to share those with you tonight, and we'll make it, like I said, as brief as possible, but it's something that's really important to us, it helps to shape who we are and where we're going as an organization. So Jessica, take it away.
Well, that was pretty much everything I had to say. We discussed our core values and the purposes and the uses of these with our employees. We gathered a committee, three representatives from each of the departments, so it would be completely representative of all the employees in the city. And we have some of them here with us tonight that are going to talk a little bit more about the values and why we chose them. We have a great graphic that goes along with it, which I don't think is going to come up tonight. But one of our employees actually contributed, the acronym himself, royally, in the Community Development Services Division came up with TRACK for us. And it's going to be used in all sorts of stuff, and it's really great. And these guys are going to talk about what TRACK stands for and what it means to us.
So building on that word TRACK, T started it out, and it's for teamwork, which is defined as working together to accomplish the city's mission through enhanced communication and fostering positive relationships, both public and private. The team was chosen because no one person can do as much as a good team. And continuing with the mayor's motto for the year of a community come together means we must come together first.
The next one is respect. It's defined as treating people and property with regard to their inherent value. Simply put, you can't have any of the other acronyms, which I won't give away just yet, the meanings, without respect simply. So, respect is the second one.
The third is A, and it's adaptability. Adaptability is defined as identify and act upon opportunities for change to increase effectiveness in a fluid environment. I'm an analogy person, so the best way I can explain adaptability is, tonight, a lot of us are going home and watching a sports game, some special game's going to be on TV tonight. Both teams are going very prepared for that game. They've been training, they've been practicing, they've done everything they can to prepare for what might happen. I predict the team that will win is a team that can adapt to the changes that are going to come before them that they were not expecting. That's adaptability, is you can be planning, you can be prepared all you want, but you have to adapt as change come forward, and I think that's what we need to do as a team.
So the C in TRACK is communication, sharing information in an approachable, attentive, and transparent manner to achieve our mission. We chose this core value because we feel that communication is integral in tying all of them together.
Last but not least was knowledge. Knowledge defined as mastery of skills and continued learning. We chose that as a core value because not only do we want to convey that we're competent at what we do, but we want to be the best at what we do.
If you can spell TRACK, you know that we're out of letters. So I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up. Just on behalf of the senior management team, I'd just like to say a word about how well and how hard everybody worked on this. We had several meetings with all cross-sections of the city municipal team to put this together. It was a much bigger list, and we narrowed it down, and we were able to go ahead and pick the main ones. But what's key to know is that, in addition to having the actual core values and the acronym and the definition for the core values, is that the second part of this that we aren't sharing today is that each one of those have action statements. And so, as a team, we went ahead and formulated what action statements define and are shown by that. This is going to help us in our leadership and being more focused for training purposes, because it is going to allow us to formulate a better evaluation system, so that we're able to go ahead and communicate with our employees exactly what they are doing right and what they're doing great. Okay, thank you.
Hey, any comments or questions from the council?
Great.
I'd like to make one comment before you wrap it up, Tim, and that is, thank you for the hard work. I think those are really, really good core values, especially like the association with the community, coming together, that's a great concept, guys. But anyway, yeah, thank you for the hard work, appreciate that.
One thing that, the one thing they didn't mention that I definitely want to mention is, another, we have our mission statement, but out of this meeting came a statement that I absolutely love, and if we didn't already have a mission statement, we may have used it for that, but it's one city, one mission. And it's, and it's the, just like we, last year was a new view for Crestview, this year is a community coming together. As the employees of the city, we are one city, one mission, which is important. It was separate entities that have now come under this new form of government, and everybody is really bought into the idea that we are one city and we have one mission, and that is to serve the public. So I'm very, very proud of this team, I'm proud of all of those that are not here today. Typically, or a lot of times when you do this stuff, you send it off, you have no idea what you're going to get back, but we, as a department and a team, did not, we went with exactly what they had selected, the acronym, the whole, everything. They did a fantastic job, we're very proud of them.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Going to move on to approval, amends, anybody have any objections to the amends? Seeing none, the amends are approved by unanimous consent. Nothing there. So, okay. Anybody from the public that would like to address the city council on any items on tonight's agenda? Anybody in the public like to speak to us on any agenda items? Seeing none, we will move along to the next category, which will be the consent agenda. Anybody have any objections to our consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Looks like we're on public hearings, ordinance 1727 being the first one.
Good evening, Mayor or Council. Let me get set up here. Tonight, we're going to discuss, and as we've discussed, a little bit of a different format from previous, trying to speed things up so everybody can watch their game tonight. First up, we're going to discuss items 12.1 through 12.3. Some housekeeping first, as we ask if there's anyone that wants to speak for or against from the public on any of these three items, 12.1 through 12.3. So nobody? And then are there any ex parte discussions or conflicts of interest on any of these three items?
Anybody here?
Seeing none. So moving forward, this is going to be for ordinances 12, 1727, 28, and 29, is for Lee Avenue. It will be an annexation, a comp plan, and a rezoning. It was approximately a half acre in area. The resident came to us as part of that annexation moratorium to bring their property into the city. As we said, this is a second reading, so you guys have seen this before. So do we have any questions from the council or audience on this property?
Questions?
Seeing none. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please read by title, ordinance 1727?
Thank you, Mr. Disney. Ordinance number 1727 reads by title. An ordinance annexing to the city of Crestview, Florida, 0.51 acres of contiguous land located in Section 21, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, providing for filing with the clerk of the Circuit Court of Okaloosa County, the chief administrative officer of Okaloosa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for severability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance 1727.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have action, please?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a motion that we, I accept ordinance 1727 on the second reading. Move it to the president and clerk for signatures.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve ordinance 1727 on the second reading, move on for signatures. Bringing up the vote here, right? It just popped up, that's good, that's a good thing. The ordinance passed 4 to 0 with one absence.
All right, moving on, and that same property will be ordinance 1728. Madam Clerk, would you please read that one by title?
Ordinance number 1728 reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from Okaloosa County Low Density Residential LDR Future Land Use Category to Medium Density Residential MDR Future Land Use Category on approximately 0.51 acres, more or less, in Section 21, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for severability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, or providing for the repeal of conflicting codes, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance 1728.
She's not going to be able to vote unless she gets back in.
No, he'll vote.
Okay, you can vote.
You can be.
Yeah, it'll come, the vote will come up.
Okay.
Yeah, it forces it.
All right. Good enough. Okay, could I have action, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Any discussion? And that motion carries 4 to 0 with one absence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 1729, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 1729 reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 0.51 acres, more or less, of real property located in Section 21, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the Okaloosa County Residential 1 R1 Zoning District. The single or multifamily dwelling district R2, providing for authority, providing for updating of the Crestview zoning map, providing for severability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance 1729.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Action, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I move staff's recommendation.
Motion, second, to approve the staff's recommendation. Any discussion? Please go to voting. And that motion carries 4 to 0 with one absence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes 12 items and under, excuse me, items 12, 1.1, or point 1 through point 3. That was on the second reading. Now we'll move to items 13.1 to 13.6, and the same thing, do we have anybody to speak for or against any of those items from the public? And seeing none, Mr. Mayor, move on, same question, do we have any ex parte discussions or conflicts of interest from anyone that we know of on the council? All right, thank you. All right, so the first one will be ordinance 1748. In this case, it is an annexation of a property owned by Mr. Tom Young. It is an annexation only in this case. He is not yet ready to define a property, a future land use or a zoning designation for that property. It is approximately 2.77 acres on the north side of Garrett Pitt Road, west at Point Center. Proper notice has been sent by mail, property posting and ads ran in the newspaper as per state law. The property is currently in the county, on the north side is property owned by the city. The staff's recommendation is to annex this property into the city. So do we have any questions from the council on that property?
Questions?
Okay. As I said, this is only an annexation, so in this case, Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance 1748?
Ordinance number 1748 reads by title. An ordinance annexing to the city of Crestview, Florida, 2.70 acres of contiguous land located in Section 36, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for an amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, providing for filing with the clerk of Circuit Court of Okaloosa County, the chief administrative officer of Okaloosa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for severability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance 1748.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Action by the council, please.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation for adoption of ordinance 1748 and move to the second reading.
All right, so, second.
Motion, second, to accept the staff's recommendation. Any further discussion? And that motion carries 4 to 0 with one absence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, moving to items 13.2, point 3, and point 4. This is an annexation and the comp plan amendment and the rezoning of a property. Let me get to my page. On Highway 85, on the north side of Airport Road, that property is approximately 2.18 acres. Again, in this case, the notice to adjacent property owners has been sent, property was posted, and the ads have been run. LPA heard this project and approved it, or recommended it for approval on January 7th. Tonight's the first reading for the annexation of that property. It will be request for property future land use and rezoning to commercial. They intend on doing a commercial development on that property. Anything to do with the site will be reviewed during the site development process. So tonight's will be the annexation, comp plan, amendment, and rezoning. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read, I'm sorry, do we have any questions from the council or audience on this one? Okay. Moving forward, Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance 1733 by title?
Ordinance number 1733 reads by title. An ordinance annexing to the city of Crestview, Florida, 2.18 acres of contiguous lands located in Section 33, Township 4 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, providing for filing with the clerk of Circuit Court of Okaloosa County, the chief administrative officer of Okaloosa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for severability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance 1733.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, councilman. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Brown.
I move that we accept the adoption of ordinance seventeen thirty-three and send it to second reading.
Second.
Motion second to accept the staff's recommendation to move to second reading. Any further discussion? Please go to voting. And that motion carries four to zero with one absence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the next one?
Madam Clerk, read ordinance seventeen thirty-four, please.
Ordinance number seventeen thirty-four reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Cresview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan. Providing for authority. Providing for findings of fact. Providing for purpose. Providing for changing the future land use designation from Okaloosa County Mixed Use MU future land use category to Commercial C future land use category on approximately 2.18 acres, more or less, in section thirty-three, township four north, range twenty-three west. Providing for future land use map amendment. Providing for severability. Providing for scribners errors. Providing for liberal interpretation. Providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance seventeen thirty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move ordinance seventeen thirty-four on first reading to second reading.
Second.
The motion second to move ordinance seventeen thirty-four to second reading. Any further discussion?
I do have one question on the, on this whole thing. It said that they might be, the fire department might need to put, they might need to put in a fire hydrant. I know this is kind of crazy, but do we pay for that or will they pay for that?
That will be part of the developer's requirement.
Okay, all right. I just kind of wondered that. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Go to voting, please. And that motion carries four to zero with one absence. Moving along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, please, ordinance seventeen thirty-five for the rezoning.
Ordinance number seventeen thirty-five reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Cresview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 2.18 acres, more or less, of real property located in section thirty-three, township four north, range twenty-three west, from the Okaloosa County Mixed Use MU zoning district to the Commercial C one. Providing for authority. Providing for the updating of the Cresview zoning map. Providing for severability. Providing for scribners errors. Providing for liberal interpretation. Providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance seventeen thirty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance seventeen thirty-five on the first reading and move it to second reading.
Second.
I have motion second to accept ordinance seventeen thirty-five, move to second reading. Any further discussion? Go to voting, please. And that motion carries four to zero with one absence. Continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the last two, thirteen point five and thirteen point six. These are both for one property. It is a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. This parcel is currently in the city. It is at the north end of Arena Road. Just under two acres at Arena Road and Edney Avenue West. In this case, the proper notice has been sent to property owners surrounding within 300 feet. Property was posted and the ads were run as per state law. We have as note, as we have not heard anything from the public from those notices. It did get heard and discussed at LPA meeting on January seventh and was recommended for approval at that time. The applicant has requested comp plan amendment to industrial with a zoning to be M1. Do we have any questions from the council or audience on this parcel? Hearing none, then, Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance seventeen thirty-six?
Ordinance number seventeen thirty-six reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Cresview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan. Providing for authority. Providing for findings of fact. Providing for purpose. Providing for changing the future land use designation from low-density residential LDR future land use category to industrial IN future land use category on approximately 1.97 acres, more or less, in section nineteen, township three north, range twenty-three west. Providing for future land use map amendment. Providing for severability. Providing for scribners errors. Providing for liberal interpretation. Providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance seventeen thirty-six.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have motion second to approve the staff's recommendation. Any discussion? Please go to voting. And that motion carries four to zero with one absence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance seventeen thirty-seven for the rezoning?
Ordinance number seventeen thirty-seven reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Cresview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 1.97 acres, more or less, of real property located in section nineteen, township three north, range twenty-three west, from the single-family dwelling district R1 zoning district to the industrial M1. Providing for authority. Providing for updating of the Cresview zoning map. Providing for severability. Providing for scribners errors. Providing for liberal interpretation. Providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number seventeen thirty-seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance seventeen thirty-seven on the first reading and move it to second reading.
Mr. President, second.
I have motion second to move ordinance seventeen thirty-seven to first reading and second reading. Any discussion? Please go to voting. And that motion carries four to zero with one absence. I think we have one more, don't we?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this one is ordinance seventeen forty. This was the, to do again, the six-month moratorium on annexation fees. This was successful for the last six months where we did that. And this, even tonight, we're still doing some of those annexations, bringing property into the city. The whole goal was to try to clean up the rather messy city limits that we've got and square it up. And also allow people to join our great city as a community coming together. Staff would like to request the six-month moratorium on annexation fees for properties ten acres or less. Any questions from the council or public?
Question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Blocker.
Approximately, how many people have we had annexed in this six-month period?
Probably at least a half a dozen, I would say. It's, we've been, we've had quite a few. I personally didn't work on all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Just comment. I think it's a great idea. We need to keep it out there. If anything, the first six months, we kind of got everybody knowing about it. Maybe this next six months will help those come on board.
Keep coming. Yes, sir.
I think it's actually closer to ten.
Ten, okay.
I think it's closer to ten.
I'd like to make a comment on, and that is, you know, one of the issues very confusing to people around here is when you say, well, that's county property, this is city property, and so it's so confusing and mixed in together. So this really encourages people to become part of the city and take some of the ambiguity out of there. So this is a great encouragement to people and I'm glad to see that it's up for renewal. And I would encourage everybody to do that. So seeing no more questions, I guess you'll ask Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Read the ordinance.
Ordinance seventeen forty.
I will do that. Ordinance seventeen forty reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Cresview, Florida, providing for a six-month waiver period for the collection of annexation application fees for properties of ten acres or less in area. Providing for severability. Providing for appeal of all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith. And providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance seventeen forty.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And can I have action by the council, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, I have motion second to approve staff's recommendation. Any discussion? Please go to voting. And that motion carries four to zero with one absent individual. And we are done with you, Trey. Thank you. Thank you, really. I know it's a lot of difficulty. We're moving on to action, item number fourteen. Permit to LPA board. And I'm assuming city manager is going to handle it.
Yeah, I would like to talk about it a little bit. So we have on our, currently on our LPA, we have a vacancy that needs to be filled. And we also have, one of our individuals is out having surgery and will miss one of the next, at least one or two of the next meetings. And then we've had somewhat of a quorum issue over the last couple of weeks and so, or last couple of meetings. And we actually had to call a special meeting. We felt we had to get a quorum at one time. So what we're doing right now, we're in the process of completely rewriting the administrative code for the city of Cresview. Our staff is working on that right now. So that's going to totally change how many meetings are required, how those meetings have to be done. Right now, we have, there's, you know, the statute requires this and Cresview requires this. And so we're working through, weeding through all that. I'm sure these guys over here really will appreciate some of that. Just the way we handle our meetings and the number of boards that we have, the number of different boards. And so we expect an ordinance to be ready in the next two or three meetings.
Yes.
Okay, so we expect to be able to come before you with an ordinance in the next couple of meetings to make some significant changes. Some of those changes will include taking all of the boards. We're going to recommend to you that we take the different boards that we have and kind of combine them into one board and try to expedite the way the process works. For example, right now, we have a separate BOA board from LPA board. And then we have code board and we have all these other boards. And so when we, when we come back, we're going to be recommending that the LPA and the, and the BOA are combined. It's an effective way to do it because you have the people who are writing the code also are evaluating whether a variation is necessary from the code or whether it's also our appeal process. Long story short, or long story long, we are, we're in the process of changing it in between now and then. And when we get that done, we do need to appoint someone. We reached out to several of the people who had applied in the past and to see if we, if they were interested. One of them being Ms. Winkler. She was not. She declined. I guess her schedule's picked up some, so she declined. So I reached out to Mike Roy to ask him if he would fill in just for a couple of meetings. We need probably two meetings until we get ready to change it. Then we'll be able to take all of our board members and figure out, combine them or we'll go through and place people to create a super board, for lack of a better term. And so at this point, that's what we're asking for. Normally, I would just say, let's hold off, but I'm having quorum problems as it is. So we would like to, that's one suggestion we have. If you have another, somebody who is a resident of the city of Cresview that would be willing to show up, I mean, sit on our board and show up. That would be great. We would be more than happy for them as well. So, but because it's such a, it's probably going to be two or three meetings before, and then it's all going to be changed again. You know, we went to somebody we knew. But again, it's up to you. You all appoint, select and appoint a member. So I'll open up the questions.
It is done by the council, not by one council member?
That's correct.
For this one.
Yeah. If a nomination is made, then votes are taken.
I will, if I can, and speak up just, I did send out it. When we had the openings for this one and a couple, we, we put it on social media, sent out the applications. The applications are online and getting.
We have, we did get it.
All right, the ball's in your court. What are you, what are you all going to do?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to go with staff's recommendation and nominate Mike Roy to the LPA board.
Second.
I have motion second to appoint Mike Roy to the LPA board. Any discussion?
And this is, this appointment is until we come back with a change to the code. So this is just a minimum.
Temporary. Okay, then please vote. And that motion carries four to zero with one absentee. Okay, Ridgeway Landing Subdivision.
I'm back.
Memorandum of Understanding.
He's back.
Oh, he's back.
This is for Ridgeway Landing Subdivision, Mr. Mayor and council. LPA number nineteen oh seven. It is a proposed 146-lot, single-family residential subdivision. And with this subdivision is an MOU that I'll discuss here briefly. This is, limited background about this property. It is a parcel of land. It's on the corner of Old Bethel Road and Jones Road on the east side of Jones Road. It's about 32.65 acres of land. They have been through the TRC and LPA with quite a bit of back and forth and work through this development to make it work as a result of Jones Road and Old Bethel being what they are and trying to look forward towards the future on planning for better traffic. The developer, the county, and us, our engineering and planning departments have worked together to work out an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding that the developer and all parties involved have worked together to do some improvements to Jones Road with an eye towards future needs in that area as a part of this development. They have also, as part of their development, given some of their land towards right-of-way on that property as well. In other aspects of this project, they have sufficiently met all technical requirements for all infrastructure, all concurrency, and willing to answer any other questions. We do have the developer and engineer in the audience if you have questions.
Any comments, questions? I think I'd like to ask one of the developers to come up, if you would, please. My only question would be the big elephant in the room, and that is the transportation. What are the plans with Jones Road?
Matt Zinke, Jenkins Engineering, 121 Hart Street, Nisso, Florida.
Thank you.
I'm the civil engineer on behalf of Ridgeway Landing Development. We met basically with the Okaloosa County right off the bat on this project because Jones Road and Old Bethel Road are both roads maintained by Okaloosa County, even though this property is in the city. And anyone familiar with the PJ Adams project knows that acquiring the right-of-way is probably more difficult almost than the construction and is costly and is time-consuming. So one of the things the county asked of our developers was, we're basically giving 25 feet of right-of-way along the entire 1,100-foot frontage along Old Bethel in case the county ever wants to four-way, or excuse me, put four lanes in on Old Bethel, they'll now have that right-of-way to do that. We're also dedicating 17 feet of right-of-way along Jones Road to make sure it has the proper right-of-way. And then they're paving about 660 feet of Jones Road and having a second entrance to the subdivision. That way, if that roadway ever gets widened, the entrance off of Old Bethel could become a ride-in, ride-out. And then, you know, you have a full access there at Jones Road. So those improvements were all coordinated with the county engineer and city staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blocker has a question.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, has it been any thought on putting the electrical on the ground?
The electrical is planned to be underground for the subdivision.
All right, on the ground.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I think those are all the questions.
Our staff is asking us for approval of this subdivision together with that MOU that will require, as part of that is to require them to do that work on Jones Road as part of their development.
Okay, any questions or comments then? Okay, could I have action, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the construction plans, 146-lot, family dwelling residential. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the construction plans, 146-lot, family-dwelling residential subdivision plans, and the associated MOU.
Second.
What he said. He's recommending we approve with the staff recommended to us, and we have a motion second. Any further discussion? And that motion carries four to zero with one absence.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the City Council? Anybody in the audience? Let's speak to, thank you, gentlemen. Anybody? I don't see anybody in the audience, so. Get back to my main page here. And I'll start off with any comments, starting out with Councilman Rensich. Anything for us?
I know everybody's itching to get out of here for the game, so I'll keep it real short since we're already eight minutes over. But I hope everybody had a great holiday, and I look forward to 2020. I think it's going to be really busy, action-packed, especially with all the new view, vision, everything that's moving forward. With that being said, I have to announce that I will not be here for the February 10th meeting. I will be out of town, so.
Okay.
But other than that.
Ditto everything he said, but I will be here for the February.
That's why I wanted him to say it here.
That's it.
Mr. Blocker?
I plan to be here if I'm not out of town. But I have a question. A person went to the police department, asked a question, and they couldn't answer it. Came to me, asked a question. I couldn't answer it. I text Wayne, and he hadn't asked me back. Has there ever been any thought of placing a couple of so crosswalks on Main Street?
Mr. Blocker.
I address that to you.
Okay, thank you. I actually spoke with Wayne about that, and I'm not, you know, the question was, you know, are we going to put crosswalks on Main Street? There are four crosswalks on every intersection on Main Street. So I'm not sure, there's four crosses, you know, they go each way at Desi's, they go each way at the Courthouse. We have an additional crosswalk down at Courthouse Suites. So I'm not sure, I would, I'd be happy to talk to whoever it is and walk them through it, but there's crosswalks all over Main Street at every intersection.
Are they labeled?
Yes, sir. They're, yes, sir. They're DOT-approved crosswalks.
I think they, they got to be DOT-approved.
They are, they are.
I would say that we got some, but I'm not positive, but I'll get an answer Monday night.
We do, yes, sir. And there are enough, more to have to talk about.
Thank you. That's all I have.
May I approach Tempe Hayes? What you got for us?
Just a few things for our citizens as well as council. Like to remind you that every Monday, 8:00, you can phone in and hear legislative briefing from Tallahassee on what's happening on the bills. They had one this morning, I listened on that. This next coming week, due to the holiday, it will not be on Monday, it will be at 2:00 on Tuesday, but the days after that, on Mondays, you can dial in, enormous, about 30 minutes, and they'll brief you on all the bills that are going through and what actions are and where they stand, and whether we really need to talk to Tallahassee or go down there. For the public, Carver Hill Memorial and the Historical Society will be having Martin Luther Jr. Program on January 18th at 7:00 PM. Reverend Alvin Smith will be the speaker, and that will be at the Carver Hill Center. On February 11th and the 12th, we'll have Legislative Day in Tallahassee. This is where elected officials will go to Tallahassee in massive numbers, and they will address or visit our representatives and our senators there, and just basically they are aware of a lot of things that we are concerned about, but this gives us a show of unity force. Last year, I was there, and there was over 400, 500 elected officials at this event. So I'm looking forward to going down on 11th and the 12th of February with the council's approval.
What, what approval are you looking for? Is it a cost associated? That's what I think they need to know.
Yeah, the cost associated with it, there's a $50 registration fee, which I've already paid. The other expense would be the hotel, and the hotel is?
$239.
$239. I'm not asking for money for food or money for gas. That'd be my own expenses.
How many days? Did you stay both nights, or you staying just?
I'm staying one night. I'll be there two days, but I plan on getting there early, that morning at 11:00, which is where we'll be meeting with elected officials. I mean, our representatives be coming over to the Doubletree, and they'll be talking with us, and we get to really let them know how we feel about certain things, the ones that are brave enough to come and face about 400, 500 people. As far as the next day, there's another meeting too. As you know, I sit on the Board of Directors for League of Cities, and there's a meeting there too, but I plan on being home that evening, so I'm only asking, requesting one-night stay.
If I could comment on that, at one point, I was interested in going there with the city manager, but with having the city manager and a representative from the city, I would rather y'all allow him to go and pay and I not go, because he'll represent us well. And there'll be two of us, I don't think we really need three, so if y'all would approve that, I.
I have no problem.
I wouldn't have an issue.
I'd motion to do so.
Okay, you got a motion? Mr. Blocker made a motion to approve that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I'd like to add that, that money.
I don't have it in front of me. I know the cost of the hotel room is $239.
We have it in the budget, Mr. Blocker.
Yeah, okay.
Motion second to approve, may I approach Tempe Hayes to go to that conference? Any discussion? And that motion carries four to zero with one absent. Okay, I'll wrap things up. I'm sorry, you want to?
No, one other thing, I know the mayor's going to mention it, but from the people I've been speaking to and running into from this past, as the New Year began, they were thoroughly thrilled with the New Year's event that the mayor has a part of, and so I'd just like to say the citizens that I've talked with are looking forward to the next year coming.
Thank you. That's a good segue into what I was going to say, because the New Year's Eve celebration blew us away. We had no idea how many people would show up. We were thinking maybe, oh, we'll get 400, 500 people to build on it. Estimates were, and I didn't make the estimate, but restaurant owners did, over 3,000 people showed up. Everybody had a good time. It was a well-organized event, and it was done because of the efforts of the city manager, the city council, the city clerk, all the departments. Main Street, it was just, it was really a team effort, and we ended that event by saying goodbye to 2019, a new view, and saying goodbye brought a little tear to my eye, but we said goodbye to it. And then we said, welcome 2020, a community coming together, and that's going to be our theme for this coming year. And that was it. If you stop to think about it, that event was a community coming together. And speaking of that, on Saturday, the 18th, at 9:00 in the morning, yes, I know it's, I know it's a holiday, I know it's early, I know it may be cold, but there is going to be a march in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It's going to be on Main Street, and we're really looking for massive participation. This has been done by a group, a very dedicated group, concerned Citizen Cresview, who's been doing it for many years. And so the city's helping them out, try to get the advertising out there, get the people out there. It'll be no more than one hour, it'll be done by 10:00. There's a guest speaker, well-known reverend from Fort Walton Beach, Reverend Cecil Williams will be the guest speaker, and so I encourage everybody to show up and join us in that march. Yes, I can't take anyone from the audience right now, but thank you. And that's all I have. And City Clerk, you have anything for us?
No, I'll just remind of the, of those of you who signed up for the dinner for Thursday night in Cinco Bajo to not forget to go.
You have me on that?
Yeah.
I want to show up and have no food.
No, I got everybody incented in today, so everybody that had responded.
Okay. And City Manager?
Yes, sir, just a couple of things briefly. Again, I appreciate everyone's patience with the new software as we work through it. It'll get better, it'll get smoother. Some things, we'll do a follow-up from tonight's meeting with the mayor and the clerk. Some things I identified that I want to change is, we're going to get to where we get the maps back up there, so I've already been working with Caesar. So then when we're talking about these, we do so many annexations and rezonings. For a while, we were able to put them on the screen. We're going to do that again, so that you know what you're looking at, the public knows what they're looking at. The software doesn't accommodate it, so we'll make some changes to get that done. But again, I know it's difficult whenever we make changes, so I appreciate everyone's patience. If you can imagine how long it takes us to go through here, there's five to seven people that have to review every single item, so having this software allows us to do that as efficient as possible. So if you guys, I sent you all an email about the five things I listened, I mentioned to the news bulletin that we were going to be focused on in next year, and one of those things is efficiency, and so we just continue to work to increase our efficiency. You'll also see some changes in here between this meeting and the next meeting. We'll be moving some stuff around. We're not, we originally had talked about remodeling this room, we're not going to do that at this time. We're going to, we've got so many other projects going on, we're just going to make some changes to accommodate it a little bit better, get myself next to Ms. Roy so we can work through the meetings better. And also, I'll get you guys a TV over here, so that end of the table can see it better. I hated that Mr. LaBuss not here, because he's been on my case about it, so we're going to get that done. Mr. Blocker, I toured the environmental center today. That's when I got a chance to speak with Mr. Steele about it, and I actually, I invite you to set up a time to go walk it with him, but we'll be having a ribbon cutting soon. We're waiting on, I believe it's the historical, the board, Historical Sites Board, I was getting wrong, to help us with the setup inside there, but everything is completely done, other than the demo of the building. It looks like that's something we're going to have to put in next year's budget, because it's over 20,000 to tear that building down, and I'm just not going to have our staff do it, because there's asbestos. So, but we're going to go ahead and get it open, so we'll be doing a ribbon cutting on that shortly. Also, the dispatch center is pretty much done. We'll have the ribbon cutting probably before the next council meeting, not in two weeks, but maybe in four weeks. So the first council meeting in February, we'll be having a ribbon cutting for the dispatch center. It is beautiful back there, and it is state-of-the-art, very, very nice, very good facility. Also, we have, we're going to see a little bit of changes in the way that we produce these meetings. One of the things Mr. Blocker brings up to me all the time is to make sure that we're transparent, and so over the last couple of weeks, we've been working together with Ken Nielsen from CCTV on a contract agreement for him to produce, professionally produce our council meetings, and so he will be doing that over the next couple of weeks. You're going to see that. It'll run, so they will be, it's guaranteed to run live on CCTV, and also we'll have good quality of both sound and picture being produced. We had some problems with the sound and stuff, so making some changes, but other than that, we're busy, busy, so I appreciate each of you, and it's almost been a year.
Thank you.
I'm hanging on for it, too.
All right, let me go back to my page here. I think I know where we are. Want to be sure. Yeah. Well, thank you all for coming, and go home now and watch the ballgame. This meeting is adjourned.